Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, here we go. Ms. Doherty. Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
This is Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Sousa.
Present.
Mayor O'Connell.
Present.
Okay, we'll go right to be the superintendent's update.
Last Wednesday, when we met, we were in the middle of giving you an update on how our meal deployment had been working well in the city. I think at that time I told you we were averaging about 300 to 400 meals a day. We'll provide you with an update so you can see the growth that has taken place in just a week. We were also preparing our Chromebooks with hotspots to be deployed on Thursday. We'll provide you with an update on how that has gone. And also Mr. Barada will provide you with an update on our educational packets. So we're going to go through the EMOC protocol, which will cover the education plans, our meal plan, operations, compensation to our staff members, and also communications that have taken place. And obviously, the big communication today that I missed, so I don't have a lot of detail regarding Governor Baker's most recent address, but I did learn from my superintendent's group that schools are closed through May 1st and that students will be returning at the earliest on May 4th. So closed through May 1st, which is a Friday, students would return on Monday, May 4th. So that was, that's what was issued today by the governor regarding education plans. Again, I'll have to watch the conference and consult with my superintendent colleagues in MASs to see what was discussed there and how that may impact our enrichment platform that so far today has been very successful. So with that said, I'm going to, I'm going to ask everyone to mute themselves and I'm going to unmute Mr. Barada, who will give an update on EMOC. He'll cover education. Chris, you're live.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Cabral. Good evening, everybody. Just brief update as to what we've been doing in Taunton Public Schools. They're in this closure. We're still waiting on a definitive message from DESI regarding the expectations for instruction beyond the offering the enrichment activities. Having said that, we continue to backfill our educational enrichment packets from last week's materials. At the elementary level, we're in the process of still running off packets for the next three to four weeks, which we're targeting for distribution to be next Tuesday. This date may seem somewhat far off, however, we have to account for the printing time it takes to complete those packets. At the middle and high school level, please remember that these remarks represent both middle and high school. Teachers have been reaching out to the students and providing enrichment activities such as suggested readings, edulastic, practice tests, PowerPoints, and videos, all with under the guise of being enrichment activities. Equity and access for all students has been at the forefront of all of our minds, and Mrs. Mulrooney will elaborate more fully on that later when she talks about our website resources that we've placed up there. Our work is continuous again while we're waiting for more direction from DESI. Early this week, principals were sent out a document in which they're cataloging staff's capacity, comfortability, and usage of Google Classroom with an eye towards using this platform for instruction if we go through more longer terms of closure and look towards shifting from enrichment to more accountable student learning. In addition to this information, we're able to seek staff feedback in regards to the method and success rate of family and student outreach, which helped informed our We Care campaign for the district. One of the positive takeaways from our closure is that provides an opportunity for us to connect our K-7 curriculum coordinators with our secondary curriculum supervisors. Kristin Keenan and I will be solidifying a series of meetings which will help facilitate this process. In doing so, we'll be able to address the individual concerns of each individual or each grade span while facilitating the flow of information on a K-12 basis, which will ultimately lead to more coherence in our system regarding teaching and learning. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Chris. Mrs. Mulrooney, would you provide us with an update on special education services? You're unmuted.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that we had our initial meeting with Russell Johnston, who's the state director of special ed on 317, where he gave us some guidance as to what we should be doing with our students. Tentatively, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 10:30, and hopefully he'll provide us further guidance. As Chris had said, we are providing the same opportunities to our students with disabilities as we are to the other students in the district. They have access to all the online resources and packets, and also access to Chromebooks as well. What's a little bit different for some of our students is our program classroom teachers have provided some additional packets that are better able to serve some of our more challenging students, and the principals in our elementary schools have been great about getting those packets out, even in one case, hand-delivering it to the students' home. Our related service providers have been reaching out to me. They've been sharing resources to the district, and at this point, we have our OT resources online. Two of the quotas from the district compiled a list of resources that covered all skill areas for our students, so they'll be able to access those resources online as well. Our vision specialist has reached out to all of her students who utilize a resource known as Book Share, and that's for students with print disabilities. She's confirmed access for all students on that website and has uploaded books. In addition, our school adjustment counselors have been reaching out to all of our students. Many of them attended a webinar on anxiety and COVID-19. They were able to pull a number of strategies that they've been able to utilize with students via email and chatting with them. Also, our SEL links are also posted on the website. We're continuing to explore ways to modify and accommodate curriculum, and hopefully we'll get some guidance from DESI on this as well. Out of district, Mr. Fagan has been in touch with all of our out-of-district placements, and he keeps me updated on what's going on there. We continue to understand that some of our students may not be receiving all of the services that they need in order to be able to access, but based on the guidance from DESI, any student who may require additional services will look at that on a case-by-case basis once we return to school. And finally, team meetings and evaluations are at a standstill as the timeline stopped once we stopped attending school, and any meeting that had been scheduled prior to will be rescheduled once school opens. We'll continue to look at what other districts are doing, as my listserv sometimes provides us with opportunities to do some things a little bit differently that are helping our students to succeed. That's it.
Thank you, Judy. And the only thing I did want to mention, too, is part of the education component, part of our preparedness, we did host a meeting with an online curriculum provider to assess what it would cost or what it would take to go full online, fully online, pre-K through 12 for all our students. So again, that was just part of our preparedness planning. In the event, we do get some direction from DESI or the state that that is the way they want us to go. And again, we received some preliminary proposals from them, and obviously, as I learned more from my colleagues and from the state on whether or not we are going down this road, I will be sure to share with the school committee, as the biggest, as the main concern from the commissioner continues to be access for students and also equity for students. So just because some districts in the state have moved completely to an online model, he still worries about communities such as Taunton, New Bedford, Brockton, and Fall River, where students would have challenges or would struggle to have access to an online curriculum.
Mr. Sousa, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, if other districts, that's still enrichment, then. They're not doing online learning for advancement. Is that right? I mean, I want to make sure we have equity in the fact that if other people are moving forward and we're moving backwards, doesn't sound right either.
Great point, Mr. Sousa. So what has happened, and what you'll see if you do some research, and I can show you what's been going on in my world with superintendents, some school districts, the more affluent school districts, then they haven't skipped a beat. They rolled out Chromebooks to every single student, and they're completely online learning, where they are, you know, they're doing more teaching versus enrichment. What we are doing in the Taunton Public Schools completely aligns with the recommendations from DESI and the commissioner. We were told to provide our students with enrichment activities, and we are preparing in the event. We have to shift and go more to a structured graded platform. We have not been told to do that yet. I don't anticipate the commissioner saying that yet, based on the feedback he's been receiving from superintendents, because there would be an access and an equity issue throughout the state, in particular, Southeastern Massachusetts.
We'll follow up on that, Madam Mayor. There's no, there's no talk of getting as many students online as we can, and then chasing down the other ones and trying to get as many, at least getting some moving forward. Will they allow us to do that and then get the other ones to catch up? I mean, rather than having 8,000 students going backwards, I'd rather have 6,000 students moving forward. And I understand equity, but this is, this is trying times and difficult times.
Yeah, Mrs., I, so I believe the, what we have in place is equitable and is providing our kids with access. So we haven't heard complaints. We haven't seen concerns from parents. If somebody needed a Chromebook, they're getting it. If someone needed a hotspot, they're receiving it. So all our programming right now is our, is enrichment activities. The only thing that might be shifting, and it's something that we're not pushing, it's coming from the AP board, is AP exams, where they're providing more structured learning for students involved in AP courses. But right now, we are, we are following the guidance from DESI, which is to provide our students with enrichment activities to keep the love or the passion for learning alive. If we need to shift, we'll be prepared to shift, but we're going to need some time to make that shift. But as of now, all indications point towards continuing with the programs we have in place.
So we're not going to do anything on our own, then, besides what the commissioner says? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Doherty, and then Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mayor. To, through you, to David, and then to the superintendent. David, what, what do you, what do you mean by going backwards? So how do you define that? I mean, I know what the words mean, but what are you thinking?
My, my, my thinking is, by not learning, they're going backwards. So by standing, standing still, we're going backwards, is my thought.
So you're, you're, Madam Mayor, if I might, you're concerned about slippage, actually, yeah.
Start out with, and then move on, then try to go forward. Slippage, it's going to be slippage, and then learn, learning to catch up, and then moving forward. So I just like, stop the slippage.
Similar to the concerns that are expressed during summertime, when kids might lose the ground that they've gained.
Yeah, if you could excuse me for one moment, Mr. Cabral has something to say.
Sure.
Yeah, and exactly what Mr. Sousa just mentioned. So our enrichment packages, all the information that we put out for students, is to prevent regression or slippage. So everything that we've put out there is to make sure that students don't go backwards, is to make sure that they maintain that level of education that they receive to this point.
Okay, Mr. Palowski, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral, are there any students so far that are unaccounted for? Are there any students that, like, teachers haven't been able to make contact with? Like, do we know that everyone's reached, and that everyone that needs a Chromebook, needs a hotspot, needs the packet, has it?
Mr. Palowski, would you mind if we answered that during operations when we go through the EMOC? Because it's going to come up, okay?
Mrs. Almeida, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. A question to Mr. Cabral. Okay, so this program that you're looking into from K, for K through 12, is that just an enrichment program, or is it going to be classrooms?
It does everything. Social, cultural enrichment, and actual teaching.
Okay, so my question, my question, too, is on this, what is this going to do next year when the students go back to school, or when they go back to school in June? I mean, in June, by then, they're going to really have had a long vacation, per se. And where do we start from there? How do we make these children accountable, the students accountable, for going on to the next year if they haven't secured the knowledge that they need for this year? Especially at the high school, where we, where we have the modified block, the block scheduling, they're missing a whole semester of school. They're missing, like, all their algebra. How are they going to go on to Algebra II or Geometry? How, how are they going to do that? What are we going to do as a, as a school system?
I just want to make sure you're done with your question, Mrs. Doherty. So, so we have, we have had preliminary discussions regarding where do we pick up once we go back to school? And I know what we've heard from Commissioner Riley and from the folks at the state level is make sure that students are not punished. We don't want students to be punished because of something that they had no control over. So obviously, as we get deeper into this and as we start to understand and learn more, if we are going to be closed for beyond May 4th, then obviously, we'll start having to take a look at how we schedule our high school students for next year, how we address our students. We did capture, we did freeze everyone's grades, so we do have everyone's grades, so we know where students stand, stood as of the day that we closed. And as far as how we look at our students moving forward, I believe we were only two or three weeks into the school, into the semester. I believe the semester changed late January, and we ended up closing about a month in. So it wasn't, it would be, we will probably have to look at the schedules and reschedule students and really have to take a look at the seniors as far as moving, how we move them forward, or how we proceed with graduation or competency determination. I know the commissioner has been given some leniency to be very flexible with seniors in high school and their competency determination.
In college. How are these students that, say, for example, they needed a trigonometry course to go on to college, and they're seniors and they're getting accepted, how are they going to cope when they get into the college?
Yeah, and unfortunately, Mrs. Almeida, we don't have the answers to those questions yet, but those will be questions that we'll be, we'll be asking and we'll be answering, is learning on how other districts are addressing that, so that we can, so that we can do something that's appropriate and in line with other school systems. We're not, we're not the only ones that are asking those questions, it's just we haven't got there yet.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cabral. And let me just chime in for a moment to say that I think these are all very valid questions. We just received the information for the extension of the school closings. I think we'll be receiving more guidance from the state, and we'll be, I think Superintendent Cabral and his team and the school committee have been doing an outstanding job dealing with the situation right now, and we will be getting more guidance and answering these questions in the coming days and weeks. And I know more questions are going to come up, but seeing as how we just learned this information within the last hour, I do think it's probably impossible to answer a lot of the questions at this very moment.
I understand that, Madam Mayor, but I'm just, you know, hearing out, like, a lot of our students still don't even have their Chromebooks to go on and do any kind of, even if it's enrichment. And that, that's another concern. They'll, they'll all have them by the end of this week, though, right?
Well, we can continue with EMOC. I'll give you guys an update on meals, operations, compensation, and communication, and I think a lot of your questions will be answered then.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can continue, we'll ask Mrs. Perry to give an update on our meal plan. Kathy?
So thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our meals are going quite well. We, as Mr. Cabral stated, we had a few between 300 and 400 initially. Today, we served over 1,200 meals, and that's about what we have been average, averaging over the past few days. As you know, we have seven sites, eight including the YMCA. We are delivering to Bristol Commons and Paul Bunker from 11:00 to 11:30 daily. We are also delivering to Highland Hills from 11:30 to 12 o'clock daily, and the YMCA from 11:45 to 12 o'clock for the children that are in the daycare program there. Our four schools, Mulcahy, Hopewell, Martin, and Parker, are serving from 10:45 to 12:45. I've had the opportunity to go to every site and visit and watch. Our staff is doing an outstanding job as far as social distancing, keeping very, you know, cautious, using gloves, hand sanitizer. I've had our school resource officer, Officer Peterson, go to every site to make sure that they were safe, that the traffic flow was continuous, and overall, I will say, our meals are really quite successful. In fact, I mentioned to Mr. Cabral today that there were a couple families that kind of happened upon the truck at the YMCA, and although at the moment they arrived, there weren't enough meals, because they had only scheduled, there were 18 children in the daycare, so they had scheduled 18 meals. Once they saw these families arriving, we talked to Karen Pappa, and she quickly added them to the count. So it's really been quite nice. The families have been incredibly appreciative. We do still have some families that are struggling getting to sites, and they have been reaching out to their principals, and the principals have been reaching out to me, and we're continuing to improve that plan so that we'll be able to get food to the families that need it if the sites are not close to their homes. So I'm working together with Karen Pappa to address those needs, in addition to the other needs that we're getting through our, our staff email. So I'm happy to report that things are going very well there.
Mrs. Perry, would you mind giving an update on the We Care email and how that's been successful?
Before, from food, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Doherty.
That's all right. Food question before you move from that topic. So as someone, a couple of people have raised the question, and I promised I would ask it, about using the buses, assuming that we continue to pay for the buses without using them for the delivery of food. I'm not recommending it. I'm asking the question about whether or not that's been entertained.
I'll take that question, Kathy. I learned on Friday that Bloom laid off all their drivers.
Ah, so are we still paying for the bus service?
Mr., I, as of now, no. I've contacted a school attorney, Gay, to get some guidance regarding paying for services that haven't been rendered. I have had an initial conversation with Mr. Bloom regarding costs that he is incurring and costs that we may be able to cover, but I'm not going to authorize any costs until I've spoken with Attorney Gay and obviously spoken with the school board.
Yes, and certainly, if they're laying off drivers for good enough reason, having us continue to pay for that service doesn't make any sense. A second question, if I might, Madam Mayor, and it, it has to do with, at our last meeting, I asked the question about whether or not we could combine the breakfast and the lunch, and Mr. Cabral, you had said maybe, maybe having food distribution around 10:00 or 10:30 or somewhere like that. So whatever happened to that? Are we doing both breakfast and lunch separately?
No, actually, we've combined it into a single stream delivery. So to limit exposure for our staff and to minimize parents and kids going out into the public, we've done one pickup, which is more like a brunch. The height, the school sites are at a different time, and the, the hot dog, the other areas we're distributing are at a separate time, like Bristol Commons and Paul Bunker, and the third one escapes me. They're at a different time, but it's all on our website. It's been communicated. I want to thank the mayor and her team for putting that information on their website as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Kathy, could you give everyone an update on the We Care and how successful that's been in finding families that might slip through the cracks?
Yes, absolutely. Mrs. Doherty, to answer your question, we are serving, each family's, each child's getting two boxes. One's breakfast, one's lunch. So they go to the site from 11:00 to 11:30, and they receive their breakfast and their lunch. So, and same with the schools. So we've combined it, and they're getting two separate meals when, when they get there. So as far as the We Care email, so the We Care email is a staff email. It's not, it's not a public email. It's a staff email. And so what happens is our teachers have done a tremendous job reaching out to families. When they have found difficulty communicating with a family, let's say, for example, they have 22 children in their class, they've been able to connect with 21 of them, and that 22nd one isn't answering the phone, they're having a hard time getting through, they then will send me that name, and I've done a variety of things. I've reached out to community facilitators, and for some, for some of the families, there's been a language barrier. So I've been able to use both Delilah Mendoza and our community facilitators, particularly Liz Pacico, who speaks Portuguese, and she's been able to reach out. When it's come to a, to a case where we haven't been able to communicate, I've used John Peterson, our SRO, to go to the homes to do well checks. So the We Care email has been used, it's, you know, at times very overwhelming, juggling two emails, and I'm getting a lot of requests from the We Care email, but I've been able to funnel some of the requests depending on what the needs are. Some of the needs have been teachers telling me that children need food or basic needs. The Family Resource Center is still open and available to help families. They're not open to the public for people to go in, but I'm continuing to work with Erin Kelly Green and her resources. Other families have needed other basic needs. The opiate task force, Ann Bisson, who is in charge of that, is gathering together all of the resources in the city and putting a pamphlet together that I'll be sharing with our principals and our teachers, so that when the families do reach out to the teachers, they'll be able to at least give them a place to go. A lot of the We Care emails have been focused around the Chromebook distribution, and so we have taken those requests. We've categorized them. We've catalogued all of our devices, and we are making individual phone calls. We've already had an enormous amount of students pick up their Chromebooks. On the Chromebook delivery, or the Chromebook pickup day, we were there from 9:00 to 2:00 at several different sites, and we are still continuing to get those Chromebooks out by making individual phone calls and arranging pickup.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. So that covers, that covers meals and somewhat operations with the We Care. I'll turn things over to Mrs. Moynihan unless there are, I see some hands up, Madam Mayor, unless you want to.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Sousa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sure, I just have a couple of questions. Right now, the, the Chromebooks are only going to middle and high, high school, right? Is there a point where we're going to extend that to elementary?
So, Mr. Sousa, good question. So families that have been coming in, or families that have been identified through We Care, again, our neediest families, we want to make sure that people that have no access, people that need them, not people that want them, we want to make sure that people that have a need are being addressed, and we have been sharing the Chromebooks with elementary school families as well. But we've been emphasizing the packets, the paper packets at the elementary level, but families that need a Chromebook, they have been receiving a Chromebook in addition to Wi-Fi if that is a need. We see the Chromebooks and the hotspots at the elementary school level as a way for families to stay connected, in addition to utilizing the enrichment activities we provided. David, you were muted, David.
I don't know, software's jumping around.
You're all set, Mr. Sousa?
I have one more question, Madam Mayor. Follow up to that. Thank you. If we, if we get a question from the public on any issue, we tell them to contact the building principal, leave a message at the school. Is that the policy? Is that, is that the standard that we're going to do now? I see a bunch of shaking heads, yes, so that sounds like we're doing it right.
Yes, just to keep things streamlined and funneled, where we've been, and we ask you to support this as well, and I shared this with the mayor's team today. Any phone calls, any communications that you receive, we would ask that you not answer them, that you refer it to the principal, who will then, if they're not sure how to answer it, they will refer it to the leadership team. One of the areas that Marguerite will talk about when it comes to communication is that we've, we've struggled with certain groups, and Marguerite can talk more about it later. And again, out of the kindness of the heart, trying to be helpful, sending out the wrong message, or sending out something that doesn't align with our plan. So we're asking that any communications that you receive, or any question you receive, direct them to the principal, they're getting the email forwarded, they're getting their phone calls forwarded, they will address them in accordance to the guidelines that we've provided.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, this question, I guess, is for Mr. Cabral and Mrs. Perry. Do, do we have a count? Do we have a number? Do we have a count, do we have a number of students that we haven't contacted yet? I know that when we spoke last week, the idea was that all the different schools, all the principals, we're going to communicate to all the individual teachers and the teachers had their group of their homeroom students, I guess, and they were all meant to call them, email them, account for all of them. Do we have a count of students that have not been contacted?
I'll start to answer that and I'll let Kathy add in, chime in in the event I miss, or I don't answer correctly. We haven't asked, we haven't asked people to send us a list, so to speak, of all the students they've contacted and haven't contacted, but I believe through the We Care, as Kathy stated, if someone has not been able to connect with a family, they've been sharing that with Kathy so that we can do the connection through our facilitators. So Kathy, if you want to chime in and just reiterate, I believe, again, I don't want to say we've accounted for 100% of our students, but I believe people have been telling us if they haven't been able to reach out to kids and you've been reaching out to them, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct. I mean, I'm in constant contact with all of the principals and the students that their teachers have not been able to connect with have either come through We Care or have come through a phone call through me. So again, I don't have a written list, but I can tell you that they have been very vigilant with it and that overwhelmingly have done a great job reaching out. I know that they've taken their list. I know they've worked with their homerooms and at the high school with, you know, a certain block. But I haven't, I don't have a definitive list, but I can tell you that it happens every day. I'm getting calls and, you know, concerns for families and we're reaching out and we're addressing them every day.
And I will add that Mr. Barata did create a spreadsheet that we sent out to all our principals to share with our teachers so that they can track all the students that they've contacted and students that they haven't contacted. So we have that running list. We just haven't asked them to turn them in to us, Mr. Palowski.
Actually, Mr. Cabral...
That was going to be my next question.
Part of the, part of that, my presentation that talked about that spreadsheet going out, principals were going to provide that to me today. So I'm beginning to look at those names and because that was on the We Care feed, a lot of those names have already been addressed. So we can always double check on that.
Measure twice, cut once, right? So we'll turn things over to operations, Mrs. Moynihan. Could you please give us an update on operations? I'm going to unmute you now, Mrs. Moynihan. You're unmuted?
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, can you hear me? Great. Well, speaking on the operations side, we are now moving to having only essential personnel reporting to our schools and that including our custodians. So our custodians are still reporting to our schools. They are cleaning and disinfecting the schools and also checking to make sure the schools are locked and that everything is properly working, any of the heating issues or anything like that. Groundskeepers are also part of the essential personnel and what they have been doing as per the order of the city, we have been taking some signs that the city has ordered and posting them on our playgrounds saying that we are asking that the playgrounds are now closed and that has been a sign that is on all of our playgrounds. I know we have a few more that are on order for the signs and putting them on the rest of our playgrounds. In addition to playgrounds, our groundskeepers are also locking up our tennis courts and for the high field, the field and football field stadium, making sure that we are, of course, telling kids to stay away and practicing social distancing. In addition to groundskeepers and custodians, storekeepers are also part of essential personnel and they've been assisting in disinfecting our schools, also disinfecting parts of our city buildings and daily to our cafeteria at the high school where they are prepping our meals daily for our students in the community. Storekeepers have been delivering supplies to our schools, making sure that our custodians have everything needed to continue cleaning and disinfecting and then, of course, checking orders and making sure that we have our inventory on hand and if we have to order any additional wipes and stuff like that, they've been continuing to do that. In addition to all of that, what we have been doing on our side is we've been tracking, again, per orders of the city through TIMA, we have been tracking all of our expenses that we have incurred due to the COVID-19 and that could be simple things as just buying the locks that we just purchased the other day. And I believe that is the updates on the operations side. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If I could also add on operations, I think this would qualify on operations. I did contact Austin from NESR regarding the work he was doing on the master facility plan at the high school and because of the situation that we're in, I did ask Austin to stop work on those plans not knowing what the financial situation will be moving forward. I thought it would be wise to put a hold on that in that that would be something we could resume once we are clear of this COVID-19 crisis. So I wanted to make sure that the committee was aware that I did ask Austin to stop on that and I did tell him that, I did inform him that I would, we would make them whole for any services he had performed up until that point, nothing beyond that. So that's where we stand with Austin in that facility. And also under operations, if I could just real quickly, Mr. Souza, I did also, I have been in contact with Attorney Gay on Saturday. I also spoke with Attorney Gay and Thomas Gay on Monday. He wanted to know if he should, if he was to continue with his letter, knowing that the Attorney General was involved or may be involved. I advised him, per wishes of the committee, that I did expect a letter from Attorney Gay with a demand to pay or demands that EF Travel make our parents and students whole as directed by the school committee. So that is continuing. I have not received the draft communication yet, but once I do, I will make sure the board is aware.
And if I may, Mr. Cabral, I apologize. I did leave out one additional item, too. Our storekeepers have gone ahead and delivered supplies that we have in the warehouse for nursing supplies and we delivered that yesterday to Morton Hospital. So Morton Hospital did thank us via social media that we did take any of our items that we had in stock at the warehouse and Nurse Regan's closet of inventory, what she had, and we have donated that to the hospital. We have not donated any of our supplies that we have currently in our schools, but if need to, we'll look at that going on as closure has been extended.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. So in addition to our nursing supplies, we also donated any protective gear from our CVTE department at the high school and also from our TLC program. So we're pretty much scouring our schools, rounding up any supplies that would be beneficial, would be helpful. And I think I shared that email from Dr. Thayer with everyone this morning. They are very, very grateful for the support from the top public schools. If we could continue on, we'll have Mrs. Moynihan discuss, oh, I see, sorry, I see your hand up, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute there for a second. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, on this issue with us and do we need a formal vote of the school committee to delay this? Would that, would that help you? I mean, I don't think so. The other thing, colleagues, is do we want to just delay this whole thing for a year? Where we don't know what the expenses are going to be and how the, this COVID-19 is going to affect our budget? Do we just want to delay this for a year and take it up next year moving forward? We don't know for, you know, we don't, everything's kind of uncertain. Should we just delay this indefinitely? Just a thought. Mr. Cabral, do you have any thoughts on that?
My recommendation would be that we, we continue or have Austin continue with the work probably in the fall when we return to school because that would probably set us up for a bid or going out to bid in December or January. Then we could schedule the work for May or for June when we get out of school next year. That would be my recommendation that I would share with Austin.
So it sounds to me like we don't need to, but I think administratively, you could just, administratively, you can just handle it moving forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll ask Mrs. Moynihan, compensation should be pretty quick. I think everyone's pretty happy with what we've done compensation-wise. So Brenda, if you could just give a quick update on compensation?
Sure. We have gone ahead and processed payroll, so all of our staff has been paid. And we have had a few issues with some, honestly, just a few, meaning just a handful of payroll issues which we have addressed and everybody has been paid. And if there's been any issues, we've asked staff to go ahead and reach out to their principals and their principals have been reaching out to my office as well. So, so far, so good. We have paid everybody thus on staff.
Thank you, Brenda. The only thing I'll add to is that we appreciate the cooperation, working hand in hand with the city treasurer and the auditor's office to get our payrolls and to get our vouchers processed. So as more and more of us continue to work remotely, we're becoming very efficient in looking at new and creative ways to make sure people get paid and bills get paid. So I just want to say thank you to the city for their cooperation there and also to our payroll department who are working remotely and also going into the buildings on a staggered schedule to make sure that this work gets completed. And obviously, our unions have been tremendous. They've been working with us, understanding that staff continue to be paid and any issues that come up with any benefits or anybody, any individual out on leaves, we are addressing that on a case-by-case basis with our unions. They've been extremely supportive. So I just wanted to thank them as well. And then the last piece would be communication. I'll ask Mrs. Attorney Mitchell to provide us with an update on communication.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. So I'm hopeful that you've all been receiving all the different communications we've been putting out in the last week and a half or so. The goal here of our communications was to be able to inform the public and our staff about what was happening as things were changing so rapidly and also to try to provide some consistency of messaging so that it helped as various people were implementing some of the different programming that we've talked about earlier tonight. So to that end, I know Superintendent Cabral has been issuing letters separately to staff as well as to the community following this EMOC guideline. They've been pretty much daily for the last week and a half or so. Going forward, we don't necessarily anticipate them always being daily, but it is our commitment that we'll continue to keep the community informed and our staff informed. And if we need to issue updated letters, we will, should there be any changes. I expect in the next few days, we're going to have a lot of different communications going out because of the extension of the school closure and then whatever guidance, it sounds like DESI will be issuing tomorrow morning, both from the Department of Ed, Commissioner Riley, and also Mr. Johnston with the special education updates that are coming to all of the districts. We also issued a frequently asked questions document and we posted that up on our webpage under its own tab. That document was issued last week. It's our commitment to update that document. And again, I anticipate probably working on that in the next few days because there will be some significant changes as a result of the recent announcements tonight. So we look, we're looking to replace that document and identify where things have been changed, but we just thought that it was a different format that some people might find more helpful in addressing questions and answers that both staff and the community have. In addition, we've sent out letters to the special education families that was issued by both Superintendent Cabral and Ms. Mulrooney after our initial meeting with Russell Johnston and then I would expect that we'll be sending out an updated one once we have further guidance tomorrow. We've been looking at, as Superintendent Cabral mentioned earlier, consistency in our messaging with all people that are, that we've been working with. So that starts up at the leadership team level. It goes down to our principals. We've been having almost daily Zoom meetings with them. We've also had an all administrator meeting earlier this week where we provided similar messaging and then from the principals down to their staff and then even noticing that our parents, too, getting the messages out because we were noticing initially at the beginning that a lot of people were very well-intentioned in trying to reiterate messages that we'd had. Perhaps they didn't have all the details accurate. So for instance, our PTOs were very eager to try to assist and help to make sure that we weren't getting confusion in our messaging to people and, you know, it certainly hasn't been perfect, but when we've noticed confusion, we've tried to provide updates and clearer guidance on that. We've asked the principals to just touch base with us and let us know what it is they might be sending out to staff. We've also asked them to ask their PTOs to share with them any messages that they intend to issue before they're issued just so we can make sure that the accurate information is going out to the public. And it's been pretty well-received and it seems to have addressed any areas of confusion. So the feedback we've been getting from the public on our communication has been extremely positive. The feedback from our staff has been just as positive. And in fact, to that end, we thought it was really nice to see some of those positive feedbacks. So we've actually started archiving many of those comments and responses that have been sent our way because we thought it might be nice, when this is finally all over, to be able to look back and share in some of the positive communications we've been getting from the public and reflect on all the work that we've been doing. So we hope to do something neat with that and at least to have it as a time capsule for all of us to look at as we get through this process together. But I have to say, it really shows what Taunton is so great at doing, which is coming together, helping each other out and supporting each other in times of crisis. And that is absolutely how we're seeing this community respond right now.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell. And then the only piece I will add, so tomorrow, big meeting for Marguerite and Judy Mulrooney on special education. And my next conference call with the commissioner is on Friday. So I do not have enough, I shouldn't have, unless something happens tomorrow, my next update or my next meeting with the commissioner will be on Friday. Tomorrow's a big day for special education as they're going to be involved in a pretty lengthy conference call with DESI. So that concludes, that covers our EMOC protocol. So we are done on our end, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. If we could move now to critical items, not reasonably, excuse me, Mrs. Doherty?
What is that we received from project manager of the Mulcahy School for a Zoom conference on Friday to bring us up to date? The last communication that we received was that they, they were feeling at that time a bit delayed. Mr. Cabral, can you add anything to the progress that's being made regarding the new school?
Sorry, Mrs., sorry, my daughter's got a virtual dance lesson, a tap lesson going on upstairs. Could you repeat your question, please?
Just the, the update on the new school.
Actually, Mrs. Moynihan, would you mind answering that? Because we did talk about that today and you've been on a lot of meetings lately.
That I have. Zoom and I are best friends. So we did participate today in our construction meeting and we average about 100. In the past, we've been averaging about 100 subcontractors on site. Today, we're in the 80s. So currently, what Steve Agostini, who is the general contractor on the project, does believe that everything is pretty much on target and looking as if we will be finished for the June deadline. Now, again, there are a few things that have been delayed, like some type of woodworking, but work has been continuously going and we are seeing progress on the school every day.
Thank you.
So as I discussed with Dan Tavoris offline, Dan Tavoris and I spoke, so unless there is some directive from the state to stop all construction, they're going to continue working on that facility until they, until they are told to stop. And as of now, they are still on schedule for the June 20th, I believe, substantially completed turnover to the city.
Yes, Mr. Cabral, that's correct. We've been communicating with Dan Tavoris and they would like to keep working and we are agreeing to let them keep working. So we, we have no intention of, at this point, requiring anyone to shut down those projects. Mr. Souza?
David, need to unmute yourself, David.
It mutes me, I guess. Put me on at the end before we close out because I just have a couple of follow-up things on the scheduling and that. But one question on this, on the construction project, and I didn't catch the governor's whole conference, but one thing he talked about was requiring construction sites to have hot water, wash basins and all the disinfectants for the workers or something. I think he's put a new mandate on that. So just be aware that there may be something coming down on that. I don't know the whole story. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just put me on at the end as any, before we close out. Thank you.
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Cabral. You briefly touched upon EF and Attorney Gay. So could you just repeat? So could you just repeat exactly what you stated, because I didn't get the whole context of the conversation?
Sure. So I did share with Attorney Gay on Saturday, information that I received from the superintendent's group that I'm involved in. I believe I shared it with the school board regarding people have reached out to the Attorney General, so he is aware of that. And I explained, and I did share the list of students with Attorney Gay, so he knows how many students have, are involved. He asked for the contract, and he also asked for copies of any communications that I have shared or I have received regarding EF Travel. I followed up with Attorney Gay on Monday to discuss the matter. And I also spoke to Thomas Gay, who was working with Attorney Gay on this matter. He reached out and asked if we still wanted a letter, knowing that the Attorney General may be involved in this. I advised him that, per wishes of the school committee, that the expectation is that we'll have a letter from Attorney Gay asking EF Travel to make our families whole for the money they had put forward towards this project in addition to whatever may be going on with the superintendents in the Attorney General's office. That is what I've asked Attorney Gay to do. He said he would share a draft communication with me once it, once it is ready. I reached out today to see if the draft would be ready for me to review prior to this meeting. It is not ready. But as soon as the draft is ready, I will make the board aware. That's where we stand with EF Travel today.
Thank you. Again, March 19th, you sent out a communication to us that you had already spoken to Attorney Gay the night prior, I guess, at the conclusion of our meeting that night. And today's March 25th, and there's no letter drafted. We've made a motion to move forward with the letter. I share with you, Mr. Cabral, I didn't share with everybody else on the board, that there are companies folding very quickly. I won't mention it, but a company's been in business for 94 plus years, folded, just closed their doors and left. So again, I'm very, very concerned that the longer we wait, Attorney General's fine, but Attorney General's probably got a million other cases going on besides the schools affected by EF. Again, I, I, I know they're probably busy, but time is dragging, and I don't know if they could prepare something any quicker.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Mrs. Fagan.
Hi. I just want to share with you that I saw my daughter in law the other day, and they, they had some kind of a communication from that company that people that want their money back to send letters to them. But they're only talking about giving them back 3,000, and they're going to hold the other 1,000. I don't know if you're aware of that, Mr. Cabral, but she had told me that, because she said something to my husband about helping her grab something to write to them. But I don't think they fully intend to reimburse people for that.
Actually, Mrs. Fagan, if you could forward a copy of that communication to us, I will send it to Attorney Gay as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how they were doing it, but I'll find out from her. Just send it to you at the, the school thing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So are we ready to move on to C? No. Mr. D'Amelio.
Mayor, I'm muting here. What Mrs. Fagan just referred to is clearly on their COVID-19 update. Any tours between June 13th and July 22 is exactly what Mrs. Fagan just said. So it's not that, you know, we really have to dig any deeper. It's on their website. It's very clear their intention. I believe this tour is leaving the end of June, if I recollect. Is that correct? The end of June? So it clearly says that between June 13, July 22, that the vouchers are 100%. There's no cash back. I mean, again, they write the rules and their policies, and apparently, they just want us to stick to it. So again, I, I stress the importance of moving rather quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palowski. Mr. Palowski? You're muted, Mr. Palowski.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep.
So I'll speak as a parent with a student going to EF Tours. So I've spoken with Mr. Perper recently regarding all this stuff. So the way he laid it out to me, the folks going in June, is if they were to request all of their money back now, or at least before the April 30th deadline, or whatever the date is, they would get all of their money back less $755. And that is three non-refundable items. So it was the $95 non-refundable, you know, sign up charge, registration fee, $160 insurance fee, which no one had any choice on. We opt everybody into that insurance. And then a $500 cancellation fee. So if, I think what we should be doing regarding that June trip is, number one, survey all the parents and find out where they stand. Do they want to just get all their money back? Who wants their money back? Do any of them want to accept the 100% voucher that would be good for, say, that same trip next June? And then move from there, because I'm hearing a lot of numbers thrown around. Is it not true that 755 is the amount that they would be short if they were to call and cancel right now? And then furthermore, are we going to provide any guidance to all those parents to tell them what to do? Because the way it was left with me was that each individual parent would have to communicate to EF Tours and tell them what, what they want to do. So I think we need to get absolute clarity on that, find out where all the parents stand, and then give them guidance on, on what they should do. Thank you.
Yes, and that is something that Mr. Barata has been asked to work on, with Mr. Perper. There was, again, going back to the communication, we shared some information with the high school regarding future trips, and it was misinterpreted by the folks at the high school, which created some confusion. So Mr. Barata and I have discussed working on a communication with Mr. Perper that will come from us, that will share with parents everything that we've done to this date, and also provide them with some guidance on options that they can pursue in addition to what we're doing.
Okay, excuse me, sometimes it's muting and sometimes it's not. So we're all set, I think, to move on to C, critical items not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours, advance notice. Okay, seeing none. There are no press. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Palowski.
Sorry, I was just waiting for the right time to talk about this. So I, I, I think the announcement that school is closed until May 4th is, falls into this category. So I understand we're going to have, Mr. Cabral is going to have a meeting on Friday with, with the commissioner, right? So I guess my question is, if we were told today, or tomorrow, or Friday, that we need to make the switch from enrichment to, you know, legitimate education, you know, grading, assessment, all of that. Would we be, how quickly would we be able to do that? And what would be the line item checklist of things that we would need to take care of in order to get there?
Off the top of my head, based on the discussions we've had as a team, we would have to identify a platform, which I believe we have. We have a company that I, that we've worked with before. They run our Taunton Virtual Learning Program with Barbara Bianchi, so we know them well. So that would be one. We would have to provide our staff with professional development. So because this would be new to staff, because they would be the ones overseeing the courses online, so that would take some time. As much, we haven't gone deep into the weeds with the company to see how long professional development would take. But they have provided, they have stated that there would, there would be some PD involved. We would have to make sure, again, that all 8,000 students have access to a device. We have 6,500 devices in the system. Some are older, some are new. So we'd have to make sure that all our devices could handle the platform. And obviously, have people share with us what they have at home, and then, and then we would have to roll it out. So in the, in the best case scenario, I would hope, knowing how quickly things moved last week and how quickly we were able to get our platform up and running, I would think two to three weeks would probably be reasonable to be able to get something to that scale out. And again, training our staff, this is going to be a challenge for our staff. One good thing that's going to come out of this, no matter what, our staff are more tech savvy now. Because a lot of them are entering into the Zoom, into the Google Chat world, doing blogs, dojo. So our staff is becoming more tech savvy. But again, it's going to be, it's going to be a change. We may have to negotiate or talk to our union as far as the expectations regarding workload. So again, that could take time. But I want to stress, they've been excellent. All our collective bargaining units have been great. So I would hope, best case scenario, two to three weeks to be able to roll this out in a very thoughtful way, not just throwing spaghetti against the wall and seeing with sticks.
Okay, so ju- just so I'm clear, we're talking about a platform that would do something different than Google Classroom. So like, like, we couldn't do, with, with what we have, with, with the teachers that use Google Classroom or Zoom like we're, we're using right now, we would not be able to provide actual curriculum learning.
We'd have to assess, Mr. Palowski. Again, like I said, some of our teachers are more tech savvy, high school and middle school. We're seeing a greater number of teachers who are using Google Classroom at the elementary levels where I'd be concerned. As far as elementary teachers, think about elementary teachers in kindergarten, pre-K with Google Classroom or with Zoom. I don't believe, I mean, I, I'd be surprised if there were any teachers, maybe a handful of teachers, who have used that platform. So we may be able to do a combination of the two. We, again, we haven't analyzed what this would look like. We've looked into potential vendors in the event we had to. So maybe we could do something at the middle school and high school level where it is Google Classroom, because there is more familiarity with that, with those type of delivery models versus elementary. Maybe elementary would be a straight edge annuity, which is the vendor we've been talking to. So again, we'd have to wait and see what they're advising us to do. What Tom Scott has shared with me in the, who runs MAS, and he's, he's the one who's in frequent contact with Commissioner Riley. We're going to, it feels like we're going to be giving a lot of leeway as far as how we move forward with our students with the enrichment activities slash learning opportunities.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Doherty, did I just see your hand up?
Yes, please. Just a quick comment, and I perhaps am reiterating what's already been said, the importance of communication to staff in terms of assuring them that they will be fully engaged in teaching children what they need. Because there's a lot of worry out there, as you well know, about continuing on, as Mrs. Almeida had expressed early, earlier. And also with families, that the critical aspects of their learning is going to continue on aggressively until they get, kids get back to school. It's really a concern in that regard. So that's, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other new business, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So just, just thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had us to be recognized. I apologize.
That's, no, no worries. Colleagues, next week will be our regular meeting. We'll just go to the regular time, because it's April 1st. And we'll go at the regular time. The meeting's at 6:30. We'll have Finance and Law at 6:15. Just one question, Brenda, we don't, there's no bid openings or anything, right?
Um, no, there just might be bid recommendations. There is, I believe there is going to be a bid opening coming up. I don't have the exact dates, but yes, we do. And I did receive some language about how to do bid opening during this time.
I'll talk to John about making sure legal counsel is involved with that, just to make sure. But so, so we'll do Finance and Law at 6:15, and then the meeting at 6:30 on April 1st, if everyone's in agreement. Thank you very, thank you all, everyone. Madam Mayor, back to you.
Okay, thank you. So if, if there's no further discussion, and I don't see any hands up, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made second. And all those in favor? Opposed? None? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.